They didn't get ahead.
I don't think. Are we on?
Yeah.
Good. Call the Murray City Council Special Meeting to order Tuesday, November 29th at 12:00 P.M. Could we please share with me and pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have a local there?
Nelson?
Yes.
Now?
Yep.
Rex Minkel?
Yes.
Goodchild?
Yes.
Wick?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is your second?
Aye.
Motion being second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Reason for the meeting today, the special meeting today is the action item on the TIF governance certification forms and the annual urban renewal report. Staff and the finance committee have been analyzing the expenditures that have taken place in the two TIF urban renewal areas. The next step is to officially certify our debt amounts. The detailed project expenditure listing showing certificate expenditures in each area will be available at the meeting, and I believe you've got them there today. One is Lamar's Urban Renewal and the other one's Lamar's Highway 75 Bypass Urban Renewal. In addition to certifying the TIF amounts to the county by December 1st, 2016, the council must also approve the annual urban renewal report for the fiscal year 2015-16. The recommendation is the staff and the finance committee recommend recommendation for the debt certification numbers as well as the state report will be available at the meeting. And the city staff and the finance committee will also recommend the amount of city will request of the available Lamar's Urban Renewal tax receipts for the fiscal year of 2018. This is in keeping with what we have done for the past four years and enables the redistribution of the balance of receipts to the various taxing jurisdictions. There are a lot of words there I said, but I'm going to turn it over to Scott and then he'll share with you the active word we had on the TIF. Scott?
You might notice a change this year relative to Westmar Urban Renewals, no longer on the list. That has fully sunsetted. So, nothing has to be done with the Westmar Urban Renewal. It's done, it's over, you won't have to deal with that urban renewal district ever again. But what you still have is Lamar's Urban Renewal area and the Highway 75 Bypass Urban Renewal. And as you can see in that green bracket, it was formerly called the Joint Urban Renewal because we had originally set it up in 2005 with Plymouth County. So, it was considered a joint city and county urban renewal. Here, a year and a half ago, I believe it was, it was in June of 15, we fully paid all indebtedness that was duly certified by Plymouth County. We, the city of Lamar's, paid Plymouth County off, paid them in full. They, they, they didn't lose any money, 100% of their indebtedness that they certified was paid. So now Lamar's, excuse me, Highway 75 Bypass Urban Renewal is now 100% city, no different than Lamar's Urban Renewal, which always has been 100% city. What you have before you is a spreadsheet that the upper part is Lamar's Urban Renewal and what you're seeing there is for every place that says certify, which is every category except for one, those are the dollar amounts that staff has determined and finance committee met now twice and reviewed it. So, the combination of staff and finance committee is recommending to the full council to certify those dollar amounts up to the county and thus the state, that those are the dollars we want TIF revenue to finance. In the one case, Hy-Vee relocation costs of 125,000, that was previously certified in a previous year, we want you to decertify that because in my contact with the headquarters in Des Moines, Hy-Vee does not intend to pull the trigger on their new Hy-Vee store in Lamar's until and after the Lamar's Urban Renewal will have already sunset. If it's already sunset, we will not get TIF revenue, therefore the expenditure that we certified doesn't make sense. I mean, there's no way to capture that. So, what we would propose to you today, finance committee and staff, is that we decertify that category and at a future date when we know for certain that Hy-Vee is going to build and relocate in Lamar's, that's when we will, on some December 1st in the future, we will recertify those dollars. But now it will be in the Highway 75 Bypass Urban Renewal instead of the Lamar's Urban Renewal. I haven't confused anybody out of all of them.
I think you need to say the layout. They got to have this one before the council even votes on the project, before the council ever spends money.
Yes.
You got to have these in place, and that doesn't mean we're going to spend exactly these amounts, we could spend more, we could spend less. These have to be in place to be able to utilize TIF dollars for these projects. We still will have bidding, awarding, contracts, payment of bills and all that kind of stuff that you can all vote yes or no to at a later date, but if we don't have these in place, we can't use TIF dollars for these projects. I think, and so, we didn't used to have to do it that way. That just started, what, four or five years ago?
Yeah.
Okay, we used to be able to just say if it was in the district, that's what we used it for. But then they wanted us to come up with these categories, so that's why you're seeing some fairly generic but yet real categories. The other situation is, is because of Lamar's Urban Renewal, that top half of the sheet, this is the last time you'll see that top half of the sheet because it sunsets.
I thought so.
Yeah, it sunsets, so next year we're only have the bottom half of the sheet. So, some of the items where you can see are in both.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
They're, they're in both, so we can make sure that we're covered because we don't know when we're actually going to get it done or how much it's going to cost, so we want to make sure we're covered.
Which group it comes out of?
Does that help a little bit? Is that, did I say that right?
Yep.
Okay.
From about Business 75 Overlay on up on the page, on the upper half, if you see Business 75 Overlay, that's got 1,250,000 to be certified. From there above that point, those all have, you know, dollars and cents right to the dollar. That's because most of those are on a, on a cash basis, the actual expenditure already spent. So, that's why we're zeroing in on exactly what you spent. From there below, those are estimated, so that gets with what Rex just said, is those are future projects, but we've got to certify them before we do the project, is what Rex just said.
And we got to certify them before December 1.
And then the only time to certify is once a year, December 1.
That's why we're here today.
Yep. Okay, the bottom half of the project, you see another decertification of 1,359,579 dollars for the user fees of Wells Dean Foods FY16. If you recall, when we built the new plant, we have a capital charge and we took 100% of that loan that built that plant, and we have a user agreement with Wells and Deans to pay it, but to doubly protect ourselves, we also certified the entire bond, including interest, over a 20-year span into the joint urban renewal, now known as Highway 75. So, each year as those two businesses pay the capital charge on that wastewater plant, we can decertify that amount of that total. The total was somewhere right in the vicinity of 22 million for that plant out there. That's first cost plus interest. Anyway, so that's the reason we're decertifying that. You'll see that repeatedly for the next 20 years, decertifying some of the dollars. The rest are all certifications. Some of these are actual costs, again, the ones that go out to the, the dollar amount, the ones that are fairly rounded off, starting with the 100,000 on the 2016 water main project, those are estimated, and again, according to what Rex clarified, we're, we're just trying to certify those before the project gets completed. So, we're asking for your certification of 2,905,661 in Lamar's Urban Renewal and a total of 1,709,977 in Highway 75 Urban Renewal. Those need to get on the sheet, sent to the county, so the county can log them in and send them to the state on or after December 1. Just give me some-
Let's make that motion and get that done.
Okay.
We'll go to step two. Motion approving the city's certification, decertification amounts in urban renewal as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made in second to certify the decertification amounts in Lamar's Urban Renewal as presented. All those in favor?
I got it.
Okay, Scotty, yeah, go ahead.
Just as an example, box color extension for 100,000, so if that would run 110,000, we're not certifying 10,000, we'd have to come up with that in that project.
At a future December 1, we'd have to, if we wanted TIF for it, we would have to certify the extra TIF.
You can put it in later if it does run higher.
In, in the bottom half.
That's what I mean. I, I know, I know, I know. Because the, the only other question I had is when it does the bottom half sunset? I knew the top half was.
2026 with the final TIF revenue coming in in 2028.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Motion approving the city's certification, decertification amounts in the Lamar's Urban Renewal area as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And now Scott's going to go back to-
Well, Rex, you want to jump to the third motion?
Yeah, we can do the-
And do the same thing.
Let's get the, because the, the third motion is the same thing, but it's on the bypass. So, motion approving city certification, decertification amounts in the bypass as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second approving city certification amounts in Lamar's Highway 75 Bypass Urban Renewal area as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now, what we need to also do is ask the county for the amount of TIF revenue that we are expecting for the next upcoming fiscal year budget. So, we're in FY17 as we sit here now. We'll be going through a budget cycle, as you well know, from now through about February because it's due in the state on March 15th. So, we need to tell the county in fiscal year 18, which starts June, excuse me, July 1st of 17 and goes through June 30 of 18, what do we want for TIF revenue? Finance committee and staff deliberated over that, we hunched a lot of numbers to see what our fund balance was compared to our outstanding certified indebtedness, the outstanding of the previous, meaning previous to this sheet, plus this sheet, and what will we need in that fiscal year to make ends meet? And the group has, is recommending to you today to request 1,700,000.
From the top half, if you want to say.
Yes, thank you.
The full amount from the bypass.
Yes. For Lamar's Urban Renewal, 1,700,000. That is, you might remember that going back all the way to FY13, the amount that was generated is 3,783,000. And that was the last year that we took all of the TIF revenue. So, we took everything that was generated. Starting in FY14, 15, 16, and 17, you've cafted at a million dollars less, 2.7 million. So, for 14, 15, 16, and 17, 17 is the year that we're sitting in, we told the county that even though it's generating in excess of 3.7 million, the city of Lamar, give the city of Lamar's 2.7 million of the TIF revenue generated. So, therefore, the county and the school district and the city were able to take the 1 million dollars that we did not need and put it in our respective general funds. School could put it in their general fund, city put it in their general fund, and the county put it in their general fund on the racial, on how it's split. And that's roughly 44, 44 or 45% for the school and the city, 10 to 12% for the county. Okay? This year, we're proposing in that Lamar's Urban Renewal to, to give up 2 million, plus or minus, and only request 1,700,000. Your middle motion is to do that, 1,700,000.
It's the next year, dollars.
Yeah. More information, since it's sunsetting.
That's it.
By FY19, it's done. So, all 3.7 million, plus or minus, will go to the general fund of all three taxing districts. So.
It's additional dollars?
For four, for four consecutive years, we gave back a million for each year. This year, we want to give 2 million back, and by the subsequent year, FY19, all 3.7 million will go back. It will have a serious positive impact to all three taxing jurisdictions general funds.
Do we expect thank you notes?
I think, as Scott would say, we got to explain it to them so that they understand it, but, but we're going to do our best to try to explain it because it's, it's significant tax dollars. I mean, the Westmar, I mean, the Wells South Ice Cream Plant, we'll call it, urban renewal along with all the other buildings out there have been an unbelievable tremendous impact. And now they're going to have their second wave of impact, helping everybody's general funds with real dollars they can spend as they choose. So, it's, and, but to, to say that we figured out this number lightly is, is far, far from it. We spent a bunch of time with a bunch of numbers, and I told these guys I spent a bunch of time over the holiday weekend just trying to figure out different things and coming up with different proposals, and we think this is, because currently we do still have some money in the urban renewal. It doesn't show on here, but if you look at your financial report, we've still got money sitting there, so that's why we think we can do it. But the other thing is, if we had money left over, we'd have to give it back anyway. I think Westmore had 70,000, did you say?
70 or 75, I think.
Yeah, and we actually have to give that.
No, we didn't collect that.
Oh, you didn't collect the 75, so we'd have to give it back. But if we had collected more and not spent it, we potentially would be writing everybody a check. So, we're trying to come up with what's the most prudent thing to do. Obviously, a lot of these things are estimates. Obviously, I'm not sure we're going to get Highway Overlay done for a million too, even with the 15% admin, but, but we're going to, we're going to bid it in January, right? So, it's a good, good bidding time.
Yep.
So, it, I, I think it's a good thing to do. It's, it's going to help us budget-wise with our general fund, and it's obviously going to help the schools.
Do you have any questions on that, in regard to that?
Notice you're not addressing in that motion the lower half. We will continue to request 100% of the TIF revenue generated in the Highway 75 bypass. So, therefore, we don't need a separate motion.
Yeah, and, and the thing is, until and if Project Eagle and/or the sewer plants are paid for, then we can address it.
Just as Rex stated, and the four big ones is Project Eagle, the new wastewater plant, the old wastewater plant, indebtedness, and then the water system indebtedness. So, you've got some clearly substantial in four categories indebtedness, that that's why the joint needs, just to protect ourselves, we need 100%.
I got a motion approving the city's request of 1.7 million of the TIF tax receipts within the Lamar's Urban Renewal area for FY17-18.
Second. Motion made in second approving a city to request 1.7 million dollars of the TIF tax receipts within the city, within the Lamar's Urban Renewal area for fiscal years 17 and 18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Motion approving the city's annual urban renewal report for 15, 16.
Second.
Motion made in second approving a city annual urban renewal report for the fiscal 2015 and 2016. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Wallace. You know, before we get off of this, I just want to make a comment and share. Every once in a while, I have citizens who'll stop and say, you know, or come up to me and say, "How's the city doing anyway?" You know? And, and I think, I, I, I think we really need to thank our administration people, you council members, everyone that's been involved in this, there's been a lot of thought going into it, and I think we can sit here and truthfully say, of all the projects, and we set a record, by the way, on projects, normally we do about 40 or 50 projects a year, and this year we're over 100. And so, I think we've set a record in that. But in doing so, and being able to move ahead and move this town ahead like we're doing, I think you people are really to be commended for running this city. I just want, I just want the public to know that because we are in, we're not rich, but we're in very good shape and we're paying our bills and, and still keeping the city moving ahead. I really agree with you. And this TIF is part of it. There, there's no question, we would not be able to do what we're doing if we wouldn't have this TIF program. And, and so, you know, and the other thing, I, I'm all aware, there's a couple towns, or a few towns that kind of use this program, and, and I'm telling you, we, we are not. We are falling to the T, reporting every year where we're at and, and keeping people informed. Thank you. Okay, moving on, you want to talk a little bit, Scott, about this request for a proposal that was brought to the council members here?
Yeah, don't be any motion, but I just wanted to FYI all of you, so you have a copy of the request for proposal. As you well know, through the court system, thanks to Joe, we were able to get title to the home at 31 Third Avenue Northwest. We have no business or interest in keeping that home, we just simply wanted it to be repaired to a habitable condition, and the previous people either didn't want to or didn't have the wherewithal to do so. The court system has given it to you, the city, and this request for proposal is being advertised in both media, and then we're doing direct contacts and direct mailing to a whole host of other businesses and individuals transmitting a copy of this request for proposal. So, what you have before you, we wanted it in your hands, so if, if any of your constituents would ask you, you can intelligently talk about this project. The first two pages is the request itself that's sent to them. Exhibit A is the actual proposal that the bidder, if they elect, need to fill out, sign, and submit on the date of, the due date for the proposals, which is December 13th at 5:00 P.M. December 13th at 5:00 P.M. And what you did in a previous motion at the last council meeting, you established that date and time as receipt of bids, and you also established December 20th at noon as a public hearing on any or all bids that were received by that date and time. So, that's on December 20th. So, the bid proposal needs to be executed, they need to pick one of two choices. They're either going to, number one, demo the property to, to let the dilapidated building situation go away, or two is renovate it. And they can take their pick and give a price to you, the council, on, on which one they want and how much they're offering, and then they sign that, and on the 20th of December, you will rule on what's in the best interest of the city. You have the right by that document to reject any or all bids.
Scott, one thing I was thinking about, on the basement walls, I don't know what the condition of their, those are, but in this agreement, it says they have to demolish and then fill it back in, but what if they intend to build a different house on that property? Could they, in that case, would it be possible to reuse any of the foundation or the walls or anything like that, basement walls?
I think so. I haven't been in the basement, but it seems, from the outside, they seem structurally sound.
Would you have to keep the same footprint?
However, well, however, if, if the house is demolished, that the only thing that, that is left is the basement, they can't rebuild a single-family home on that property because of Zone B.
Setbacks.
Because of Zone B too, it's not allowed for a single-family home. And then if it's demolished to about 60% of the value of the structure, they can't rebuild a single-family home.
Right.
Okay. Okay, part of the attachment, then, the next three pages would be the agreement that they would have to sign with the city and the reason for this, and Joe can talk more intelligently about it than I can, but the purpose of this agreement is to make sure that we don't find ourselves in the same dilemma that we found with the previous zone. So, we want to make sure that whoever bids this carries through with their, their intent and with their bid. And if they don't, then we're asking for a cashier's check or a certified check in the amount of $10,000 so the city can then take the property back if they don't carry through, and we'd use the $10,000 to demolish the building ourselves.
A little bit of difference there, I guess. We're not going to take the property back, we're just going to come in and demolish the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, the $10,000 that we're asking for upfront to hold is our estimated cost is what it takes to tear down the building. So, we're going to give the deed to the, the winning bidder, if there is one.
Yep.
And then, if they don't follow through, by this agreement, we have the right to come onto the property, we're not going to own the property, we come onto the property, tear it down, cash the check, and go home.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, then they have the property, again, they can do whatever they want to with it, but it's theirs.
At that point, it'll be a vacant lot.
Yeah, we're just coming in and tearing it down.
Can we, can we alter this yet or not? Is this the final?
I suppose you could.
The reason I'm asking is that, we've got a couple of questions on it, I guess. We had talked about if the intention was renovation, that there be a start date to, not just a completion.
It's in there.
Is, the start date is?
Before April 1st.
That's on renovation.
That's on renovation, okay. And then the other question, Greg and I talked about this yesterday, was, do we need to state in here or not that- do we need to state in here or not that we're not paying a real estate commission on this? So, if, if a realtor, you know what I'm saying? So, it's understood, we're not paying a, we're not paying a commission to a realtor that would bring any offer. I, I'm not.
We don't have an agreement with any realtor, why do we need to state it?
A lot of times, they have what they call a referral fee, that if they refer a customer, and I don't know if that's a written document.
Then turn that bid down.
Yeah.
We don't have an agreement with anyone.
No, I understand.
And we're not gonna pay anything that we don't have an agreement with.
I, okay. I understand that. But I also know that if I'm a realtor and I want to get rid of that or give up a client who would buy another property, I would expect something. I'm not, I'm not petitioning for the realtors here. I'm actually going against them. I'm merely saying upfront, we're not paying a commission. But yet, I, or, if it doesn't need to be stated, it does need to be stated.
I don't know whether it does or not. Joe?
I guess we've never really run into a case where we've had somebody come and ask for a commission on a bid.
And I, and I have, and I've, I've made several phone calls to the local realtors, so all of them know what's going on, and that's how this came up. I have to do some mailings yet to some outside realtors. And I'm gonna put a cover sheet with that, that we're not paying any type of referral fee and/or commission.
So, if they're expecting on the bidder, would they be paying that commission, whatever their agreement is with that realtor? A buyer's fee? Because the city's, you know, I, I just didn't know if it needed to be in there, that's all. It's more of a question than anything.
Yeah, it's a valid question. And Joe, you'll have to.
But if, but if a cover sheet explains it, Greg, I think that's legitimate.
For, for, you know, I, I've phone-called all the local realtors, and I gotta do my mailings today for any of the outside agencies. And I'm just gonna put a cover sheet in there to really simplify the entire contract and to indicate that if you do send a potential client our way, you are not gonna get a referral fee and/or commission.
Right.
And I'll put that way in there.
Yeah. I think it'd be smart, I think it'd be smart. You know, so that there's no ticked-off people, and they say, "I sent my client over there," and they won't, you know. You're right, you don't have an agreement, so it's theirs. I, I get that, but I just think we need to state it. I, I think we need to state it.
You're gonna handle that, Greg?
Yeah.
I think that's probably the way to do it. Rather than I put it in a bid document, I think, right?
That's totally fine. I, I get that, that's totally fine. Okay, as long as there is a start date. And then, the other question I had, and I'm gonna tail off of that, is, if, if April first, I mean, is, is that enough time to completely renovate it?
That's a start date.
No, 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 I know April wasn't, I know. But nine months for completion from the bid date, that's a lot of renovation to do on a property. Are we gonna have a little?
I, I think, you know, and I think Scott and Jason and I, we have talked about it, and if we see there's progress going at the house, in a positive direction.
Right, right.
They can always ask for an extension.
Right, okay, that's fine. That, that's good.
But I don't know that we wanna put it in there, because, because then, you know, we're gonna have people asking for extensions.
Right, no, I agree. I couldn't agree more.
If, if a contractor or a buyer, 'cause I'm gonna be keeping a close eye on it.
Sure.
If it gets renovated, I'm gonna be keeping a close eye.
'Cause I've had two calls on it, and the reason is, they've asked me about that. Right. And these are people who, you know, they're maybe work somewhere else, and they wanna renovate a house and make a killing and blah, 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 HDTV. Anyway, the bottom line is, is I can see it getting about half done. Yeah.
You know, I think if we see some positive, um, direction.
Right.
Progress, you know, if they need, if they need an extension, I don't think any of us here, okay, at the staff level, are gonna check for an extension.
Let's go, all right.
The last thing, the last thing you want is five months into this thing, and they've maybe put the roof on.
Right, they haven't started.
I mean.
Right. That's, yeah, I, I agree. Okay.
Clark, will you find that if you turn to the second, second, well, the proposal itself, exhibit A?
Yes.
And then, go to the second page of that, way at the bottom. You see it? Gotcha, yep, okay, there it is, there it is, okay. Okay, then going, going farther, we wanted to make sure everybody, I was hoping the press would be here, 'cause I wanted to make sure everybody realized that on renovation of a single family, if you do that, you, a single family can exist there, only on the renovation, renovation option. And then, if that occurs, the first seventy-five thousand is exempt for five years on property tax. If they choose to tear it down or renovate it into a multifamily, then what you set out earlier this year, ten years, seven years property tax exemption applies. If they tear it down or renovate it into nothing but commercial, a hundred percent for three year apply. So, when you're talking to people, we gotta make sure, I have asked people about this around every turn I make, seems like, and no one's getting it.
I agree.
Uh, it hasn't absorbed or something, or we're just at fault for not getting the message out. But they don't understand the significance of those three provisions that you have done earlier this year. So, I wanted to state that. The next several pages is, all comes directly out of the Plymouth County Assessor's Office. So, anybody can go online or go up to the assessor's office and pull that same information regarding that existing property. And then, finally, the last two pages are the B two regulations in your zoning code. So, it's B two permissive uses, B two conditional uses. Any questions? More questions? Uh, two other things, as Ken mentioned at the start of the meeting. Uh, this afternoon at four fifteen, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Uh, there's two items on there, but the big one is the current zoning versus future land use. And that kinda got tabled last month, October twenty-fifth. So, if you're interested, please show up today at four fifteen. The other item laying before you should be, this is just for your FYI. The items put together in a list of what we're asking Vanderpoel to complete yet this year. And the property owner of the multi-unit on Plymouth Street has, through, I think, the code department, asked questions about why their driveway isn't getting fixed. The owner and proprietor of Subway came in to the mayor's office, asked similar question about the holes in front of Subway. So, I wanted you all to have a copy of this list. We've given it to Vanderpoel. Vanderpoel has assured us that they will get folks down here to pick up, clean up, patch, fill in concrete for sidewalks and driveways, uh, to fix up gravel in, in terms of bobs dragging. So, we're hoping that all, all that gets done while the weather still cooperates.
Yeah, 'cause we need to make sure that this does not hold up our white-topping project.
I just want all that done for the poor businesses that live and are trying to conduct.
It's through.
Issues, yes.
They've gone through enough.
Hey, as long as we're talking about that, Vanderpoel finishing that, can I ask you a question to clarify something? Why wouldn't we want, and you explained it last time, and I've thought a lot about it, but I, why don't we want our bid to be after the Seventy-Five DOT project? I, I, wouldn't we get a better price for overlaying if we were after, and somebody's saying, "I'll pick up that work, it's extra," versus being the first order, not knowing if they're getting the next work? I'm not following.
Well, yes and no. Uh, in an ideal world, absolutely. Unfortunately, we're not in an ideal world, and the DOT is fighting with the railroad right now. And as we know, fighting with the railroad could be one day, thirty days, five years in the case of the crossing at Twenty-Fourth Street. Joe knows, 'cause he, he went down with Virgil van Veken, I downed the whole. So, they have already pushed what they thought they were gonna bid in January to February, and with no guarantees.
Okay, so you're, you're fearing that they, they could not, I mean, possibly won't get this thing done this year?
There's gonna, well, the DOT contract's gonna be probably on an order of a hundred or two-hundredfold larger than us. And therefore, that, that contractor will work on the DOT work first and foremost.
Okay.
And I got a funny feeling, and the concern of Slowfeld, the concern of DOT cited it to us as well, and I have that concern, that they will put precedent on Highway Seventy-Five from Lamar's to Merrill prior to doing our work, and we could be here in, in November of twenty-seventeen.
Okay.
Uh, wondering if our white-topping is gonna get done.
Okay, that kind of, that's a better explanation. Okay, I get it.
And so, that's my fear, that's Slowfeld's fear, and it was even cited by DOT. So, in visiting with everybody, I think we have just as much good chance of getting a good bid by bidding Two Hundred Street and the white-topping on the same day.
Okay.
And so, we think we wanna run with that, Clark.
Plus, the contractors wouldn't know for sure if they're gonna, if there's going to be a Seventy-Five project. So, no, I mean, it's, it's logical. I, I just, I, I thought about that a lot, and I thought, man, but that makes sense. That makes sense.
Originally, by bidding it in January, we're gonna be right in the thick of things with the DOT.
Right.
Uh, I don't know whether we'd be slightly ahead or slightly after them, but, so we just said, hey, all things considered, if you want that project done, I think we should bid it at the most opportune time.
That's fine.
In January.
Okay, that's logical.
So, the schedule on that project will be to bring it to you next week Tuesday, preliminarily. You're gonna set two dates and times, one for bid opening on January twelfth and a, a potential award on January seventeenth.
Do we get extra pay for this meeting?
I can answer that, no.
No. Check your, check your mailbox.
I'll clean that up real quick.
I was.
Couple in, couple over.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
I didn't attend the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made, thanks a lot.